That's the city council.
If there's questions about illegality of the lease, I think that's what he's just got partially through litigating towards the hospital.
Well, absolutely, our attorneys are in far better position to answer most of those questions than I would mine or opinions, and our attorneys are the ones that we depend on to support us in these issues.
We'll see if we can get him here.
I wonder about the need to have, you know, unless questions come up during the meeting that we don't anticipate, I mean, questions can be submitted in written form to the attorney, and then we can get the answers back.
However you all want to do it, we can submit them in writing, emails, air mail, snail mail.
I mean, I know how hard it is to get everybody together.
Not to mention the expense of having Mr. Ward come in from that far away, but...
Where's he at?
He's in Fayetteville Springdale area, I believe.
Well, if I'll get, if they'll send me the questions, y'all send me the questions, I'll make sure he gets them, we'll mail them to him. Does that work? Mr. Paddell?
Okay.
Okay. Any further from Mr. Mary while he's here?
There is a motion on the table.
You want to withdraw your motion, you want to follow through with...
The last bit of discussion, when was the last commission meeting? And some concern has been directed to me that the commission does not publish an agenda, and it's not an open meeting. I know for a fact in April, whenever we were having our first dog workshop, if the mayor remembers correctly, had to get up and leave, go down to his office for a hospital commission meeting that had not been publicized. So that, and I've been told that that's one of the reasons that there was a resignation from the commission in an attempt to, maybe not an attempt, but not publicizing meetings.
The commission makes a point of making sure that the city council is aware of every meeting date that we have, and if the city council wishes to publish that information, we have absolutely no concerns about it at all. The door is always open to anyone in the city that would like to join us for those conversations, including any of you.
That's up to the commission to publicize the meeting, not council.
Excuse me?
It's up to the commission to publicize the agenda for the meeting, not council.
The dates of our meetings is well-known to the city council, and if you would like that date published specifically in a given news format, then we can certainly arrange that.
Are the agendas put on the bulletin board downstairs every time there's a meeting?
I've never seen them.
That's my point. There's never been a posted agenda.
What's your dates? Which Monday is it of the month?
It is the third Monday of the month.
Third Monday of the month. For future reference. Any further? All right, I'll get those questions, and we'll ship them off to their attorney.
What time? Third Monday of the month.
What time you start?
Six. Six o'clock, yes. Six o'clock. And it varies, we've been meeting at a church for the last several months. I think we prefer to meet here in the mayor's office, but issues have come up that other things were taking this space, and we had no alternative but to meet elsewhere. So it's, since we don't have a specific place to meet, it can vary.
Anything else?
Give a date that you want the questions in by.
Next Friday? Let's show what the date is. Yeah, the night.
Draw my motion.
Mr. Mayor, if you would like to get those questions to me, the secretary could forward them to the attorney if you...
That's fine. Okay. Okay. Anything else from Mr. Mary while he's here? Nothing else, thank you, sir.
One other point I'd like to make, we, the commission has been trying to arrange meetings with Allegiance Healthcare regarding the upcoming renewal of our lease. However, Allegiance Healthcare has recently replaced their lead administrator at the hospital, and as a result, they've been kind of up in the air and haven't been able to define even who we were going to be meeting with. So I suspect that within 30 to 60 days, they will have that ironed out, and we'll go ahead and proceed with meeting with the hospital in order to arrange a discussion on the renewal of the contract.
That's it? Anything else?
Nothing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda is number five, Auditorium Commission Ordinance Review. Motion to discuss. I move.
Second.
Main second, the discussion's open. Mr. Berry?
We have a, an ordinance that basically follows state law. I think that's the same ordinance that we had seen before. Not sure, I just, if there's any questions or comments, this is basically the opinion of the auditorium committee, that the commission be established to be able to handle the activities and everything that's going on down there. We're getting to the point at the end of the year, and there's a lot of activities that are scheduled for next year already in the auditorium, and we need somebody, some organization set up to which can deal with the day-to-day activities. That's the reason for this, the ordinance came before the commission.
In a conversation there with Mr. Mike, he stated that they don't really want to turn the commission or the auditorium back over to the city. They're going to make a run of it. You've got 148 nights booked next year so far, and there's a chance that they have other stuff going on. Mr. Weber?
You go ahead.
Well, I was, I had to leave the meeting before that came up, so maybe I should have made it.
The CAPC has been discussing the idea. Ray Dillfield and Ron Sumner have been doing a really good job with the auditorium, and we're looking at 145 nights next year for the auditorium. That's about a 400% increase over this year. And we haven't formulated a position yet. It's basically, you've been in discussions with Mr. Maloney, and the commission as a whole hasn't decided one way or another, but things have been working better than expected, and I think some people are a little hesitant to pull the plug on a good thing right now.
I know there, you know, I'll amend it, but we have the CECA festival coming up that's going to take four weeks of it, and there's supposed to be an event there every night during those four weeks, and I'm not, not sure right now, but I think that's four consecutive weeks, seven days a week. He said that is part of the booking process, and they're, they're still working on others around here because they get daily calls for space available, times, so he says it's an up-and-coming prospect. Yes, sir.
Oh, we're looking at 90 days just to get a commission ordinance approved, and then whatever time to get people on that commission. If they are in fact that interested in keeping it going, we had last year, I don't remember exactly when the letter, the letter of agreement was written, that I propose that if that's the case, then they need to get a letter of agreement to council as far as what they're going to do and what they're willing to pay, et cetera, like the old one.
All of this was during a discussion today with one of the commissioners and Mr. Maloney. So it's, it's brand new, or not brand new, but fresh, so it's not only information I'm giving you.
I'd say we let the CAPC keep it, but we can't afford it. I got things important to postpone, I got from my mom.
They're actually, they're actually excited about the progress that's being made over there, yeah, so...
That's not to preclude an auditorium commission from being established.
No, 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 no.
I mean, we can have the best of both worlds, we can have an auditorium commission, we can utilize the CAPC personnel, and I think, you know, we can come up with a hybrid arrangement and have the best of both worlds, because we've got a couple of pretty talented people down there that booking agents are starting to take notice of the property, and, you know, just like what we, just, the run that just ended with Intrigue Theater, I mean, that's what we're trying to accomplish with the auditorium, is booking things in there that don't require the city to put up any monies for it. Yes, we, we did allot $16,000 for the Eureka Trio in conjunction with the CECA festival, but they left Fayetteville because they weren't happy and came to Eureka Springs for the first time last year, and to provide some supplemental support. I mean, this guy's bringing 400 students, their families to the community for four weeks.
Plus teachers.
Yeah, teachers from all over the world, classical musicians from all over the world, and it's pretty, and he would like to see a conservatory established here, and, you know, the CAPC understands that if we can support it in the inception, because the rule has been, you know, three years of support and then you're on your own, you know, aiding something like this, just bring such benefits across the board of the community, but, you know, things change, and we've got to be flexible enough to address the changes.
Any further, Doc?
I tell you, no point in having another commission. That's the CAPC's job, that's why they're created. We do not need to stick our heads out and get involved in this. Every time we create a commission, we have no say-so in it whatsoever. That's what the CAPC's for, and we don't need to get involved in this. I'm totally against this.
Mr. Berry?
Well, I don't really want to get into it, but debate on why the CAPC was formed, but the reason this came before us was because the CAPC, under the last director and commission, decided that they weren't going to fund and be involved with this. So it landed in our lap. I am tickled to death with, with the way that the, the people who've been involved and the director of the CAPC have handled the auditorium, and Mr. Dillfield has, and has gone out and gotten some of these groups, and, and Mr. Maloney also. They've established, as Mr. DeVito said, over 140 nights of the auditorium, which is pretty incredible, considering last year, we may have had...
It was less than, it was less than 100, yeah.
Yeah, less than 60. And it's, so it's obviously, it all depends on who's at the CAPC, and which direction they go. I think there's still going to be some issues there that's still going to be, have to be addressed by the city council. That auditorium is a large building that CAPC wasn't established to, it can be used, I didn't say, don't get me wrong, it can be used to help fund the auditorium, but it wasn't established necessarily for that. It's, so I think we need to keep our options open. I'm at this point, because of what you said, of going ahead and deferring and putting this until our next meeting in January, to see exactly where we are.
That motion?
January.
I'd second that motion.
Mr. Paddell?
Well, we're in the process, we've got two months, starting today, work on a budget. I think we need to know from CAPC, I think the old agreement needs to be pulled out and looked at, and if they're going to be willing to operate the auditorium, then, then we need to be looking at a letter that says how much money they're willing to ante up, so we know where we're heading before the first of February.
I'll relay that message to Mr. Maloney. Motion to second to postpone till next meeting? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next is number six, discussion of statute 14-235-206 sewer committee.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Second.
Floor's open.
City attorney has proposed ordinance in front of it, I don't know if he's had a chance to approve it yet, no, I'm just kidding. I have a draft copy that I have given the city attorney, strictly that, it is a draft based on state code and other city ordinances. We, we are in non-compliance with Arkansas Code 14-235-206 without it. Any recommendations are greatly appreciated, so, so... So the city attorney can look at it and put it in the legalese, and looking at numbers of people on the committee, and it basically followed, we could, we could have written it like they did the hospital commission, saying that sewer committees formed in accordance with Arkansas Code 14-235-206 and left it at that, but what would they then do? So this was the first stab at trying to get something going with something that we haven't had.
Okay. Any further? Yes, sir.
Well, when you get around to that, you might look at 14-234-116, which doesn't say you exactly have to have one, you may have one. What I'd like to know is what would be the purpose of this committee? 14-234-116.
116?
Yes.
One more down.
It seems to me if the purpose of it is, is to repair some of the sewer problems we have, I mean, the committee, all they're going to say is, give me money, we need money. We all know there's problems. I'm just not sure what this is going to accomplish, besides some people coming to us and saying they need money.
Any further? Okay. No further discussion, I believe we had a motion and a second postponed.
Yes, Mayor? I think maybe the section, the 14-235-20, I'm not sure, again, I didn't, kind of have to the city attorney to make sure, but it has a lot to do with construction of...
A wastewater plant.
Yes, I wish we'd have had this, we were doing our sewer plant. And the operation, so I guess I'm kind of agree with you, I'm not sure what the function of this is, but I'm not sure we are in violation of state law.
I don't think we are. No other cities around really have, but they have a wastewater department that handles all that.
Anyway, I guess we can get an answer from the city attorney at the next meeting.
If you postpone it, I'll look at it.
Okay.
Motion to postpone the issue of discussion of state law 14-25-206 sewer committee to the next meeting?
Second.
Advised counsel. Second.
Main seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Excuse me just a second. Just on a quick perusal of 14-235-207 versus 14-234-116. 14-234-116 addresses a waterworks and sewer commission, and 14-235-207 addresses a sewer committee, so those are actually two different issues. One is a commission, one is a committee. And indeed, 14-235-207 says, well, says shall have the power, when we go back...
Point of order, in offense, but we're talking about having the city attorney interpret this law for us, and come back at the next meeting, so we can discuss that at that point.
Okay. I think the original vote was...
Original motion?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
We're still in discussion.
Yes, sir.
Clarification, what we're asking the city attorney for is, is 14-235-206 a requirement as stated in Arkansas Code annotated?
Okay. You want to amend that to have him research all these statutes that have been, it's like 206, 207, and 234, 116? Yeah.
To see whether we are required.
For comparison?
I don't think we're required.
All the aforementioned statutes?
Well, 14-235-206 does say shall be affected and supervised...
Okay.
...by a committee.
He can research all of these and give us answers on the next...
Sure.
Is that...
January the 5th?
You want to amend your motion to include all the statutes? I think you were just talking about the 206 in your motion.
I'm in the, starting with 14-235-206 or any other applicable state codes.
Okay.
Right, if he's going to amend it, then he's going to have to go to second on that.
Okay, is your second on the amended motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on the amended motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, make the original motion.
That was just a postpone.
Okay, all right. So it is postponed with, referred to Mr. Weaver. Yeah. Thought we already did vote on it.
I don't know if we voted on the original motion.
Okay. All right, then we'll take a voice. Since it was amended motion, it's a still a real call, so we'll make sure that we've got it right.
You want, will you call on whether we're postponing? That was James' motion, postpone till the next meeting.
Okay.
Ken's amended, picked up all three.
But we went back to, to amend the motion, there was an original motion, so we're going to...
We voted on the amendment, now we need to go back to the original motion postponed.
Okay. And you want that to be ruled?
Yeah, let's do the real call, so we make sure that everybody's on the same page. No more questions?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
All right. Next on the agenda is number seven, discussion of grants from infrastructure, for infrastructure grants. At the current time, I don't believe we have any grants out or any application for grants out, except for the sidewalks of school and... Yeah. Okay. That's the only two. Any further discussion on it? Speaking of, speaking of the grants, I'll just go ahead and tell you, I believe y'all have paperwork in there to where we did get $70,000 back from FEMA for part of our slide. We're not real sure which part it is yet, because it wasn't defined when we got the check, so 70 grand's better than no grand. So we're, we're up on that end. Yes, sir.
Have you directed our grant person to search for an infrastructure grant?
She searches every day. Yeah, yeah, searches every day. That's, that's what she does most of all the time. Any further discussion on this one? We'll keep you updated on what's going on. Okay. No further? Number eight, is the Dutch and carriage franchise added by Doc? Want to go? Discussion? Is it second?
Second.
All in, okay. Floor is open for discussion. Doc?
I had to find out a few more things and talking to people at the lumberyard, I believe in the minutes, Mr. Dotson said he had permission to unload the lumberyard, and I talked to the owners, and they said they didn't even know him. Apparently, one of the bartenders there said he can park his truck there for a while. Also, people have been contacting me on the street, and my telephone was nuts. I'm not so bad about this, but I don't see where we need another franchise, he's coming in here, trying to bull his way in here on it, he says he's going to do it anyway. I, I, I want to change, I want to rescind my vote on that. I voted for it, now I want to rescind it.
Weaver?
I would like to caution the council. At the last meeting, the vote was taken, and you referred, and we referred to municipal, it was Mr. Schoen's opinion, that the vote that was taken probably established franchise or did establish a franchise. To rescind it at this point, you may be violating the contract, and if you do that, you may subject the city to litigation that is very untenable from your perspective.
Has there not even been a contract signed with him as yet, or?
There's not a contract signed in these matters, there's a check received, which is, I understand, been done. And a vote taken by this table. Now, I understand you can reconsider your issues, but you need to be aware, if you do reconsider it and you change, that at that point, you may be violating the contract. You can reconsider any of your issues at this table, under Robert's rules, but doing so does not allow you to violate terms of the contract with immunity.
How about when he misstated where he's going to unload and all, it was false. He did not have permission to load there, they don't even know the guy, but yet he said, I believe it was in the minutes, correct? Then he said he had permission to unload the lumberyard, so he gave us false pretenses right then and there.
I would also caution you to consider the fact that this was an agenda item that you've added to the agenda at this point, and that you allowed it to be added tonight without notice, apparently, to Mr. Dodson. Mr. Dodson was present at that meeting, and if you have a dispute with what he said, I would suggest you might want to inquire why he would give you false information, and at that point, that might place you in a better position to rescind what you're looking at.
Can you be contacted when it comes to meeting?
Next time.
Springdale.
Sorry?
Next month?
Yes.
Sure?
Good, I'll be satisfied then.
Okay.
Make a motion.
I make a motion that Mr. Dodson reappears at the next meeting, and shows where, and show us in writing where he's going to load and then...
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paddell?
Do we have a record of the vote for that particular issue?
Yes.
Do you have it? I want to make sure that... It was one of those, I think we did a real call, didn't we?
Yes, it was. Mr. DeVito moved to approve the application.
I just wanted to know how I voted, everybody else may not want, they're voting no.
You voted no, and so did Mr. Raphael.
Sorry, agreed.
Okay. Mr. DeVito?
Just for point of information, Mr. Dodson has to abide by the laws of this community and the laws that set forth in the franchise, so if he violates the laws, he risks losing his franchise, so, you know, that's the punitive way I would see about enforcing this.
Any further? Motion made to postpone, Doc made the motion to postpone till next month, and have Mr. Dodson appear. Ask Mr. Dodson to appear, let's put it down. And there was a second, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
No.
Postpone? Next month? All right. Move on to new business.
Move to take a five-minute recess?
Five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. City Council meeting back in session. We were entering new business, uh, number one had been dropped. Raises number two, which is ordinance regulating limousines.
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Isn't the resolution number eight under unfinished?
It's under new.
Oh, I'm sorry. I put it in the wrong place. Bad on me.
Okay. All right, so number two ordinance regulating limousines, motion to discuss.
I move.
Second.
Discussion's open. Mr. Weaver?
As to the ordinance on limousines, as I told you, uh, when you assign me this, it's gonna take a little bit of effort. And I have still got to, Madam Pluck has several documents I think she wants me to look at and I want to look at those and some other documents have been supplied to me various ways and I want to look at all of it, uh, before we make a botched job of it. Because over the last several years, there's been attempts at this that have never came to fruition. So if you'll give me a little bit of time, we will get you something, but I would like your indulgence for probably another two meetings before it'll be ready.
So we're looking at February?
Probably early February, maybe the last meeting in January, but probably early February.
Doc, you had your hand on it.
Why can't we just, uh, have Mr. Weaver know his files when he's ready and bring it on the table?